Lord, thank you for your grace towards us and the gift of life and for the opportunity to serve our fellow South Carolinians. Guide us as we make serious decisions to improve the educational opportunity of the tens of thousands of students across this state. Bless the students, teachers, administrators, and parents as we begin our new school year. Amen.
Amen. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The South Carolina public...
The South Carolina Public Charter School District authorizes champions and supports the creation and advancement of innovative K through 12 public charter schools that provide access to academic opportunities for every student in South Carolina to reach their fullest potential. Marlene, would you take the role, please?
Jonathan Butcher?
Here.
Jonathan Butcher is present. Stephen Gilchrist?
Present.
Stephen Gilchrist is present. Kip Miller?
Present.
Kip Miller is present. Cindy Mostella?
Cindy on Zoom?
She was going to join by Zoom.
Not yet.
Okay, sorry to say not yet. Randy Cage? Randy Cage is not present. John Payne?
Present.
John Payne is present. Teresa Pope?
Present.
Teresa Pope is present. And Billy Strickland?
Present.
Billy Strickland is present. Mr. Chairman, we have four.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion for the approval of the agenda for today, August 10th, 2023.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's known opposed. Need approval of the minutes from the June 29th, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's known opposed. Marlene, are there any public comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, there aren't any at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we are in need of an executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's contract and for litigation update from our legal counsel. So for the time being, we'll go into executive session.
Cindy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll call this meeting back to order. We have come out of executive session. As a reminder, we went into executive session to receive litigation update from our council and to discuss the superintendent's contract. So, item nine is action items, superintendent's contract. Before we have any discussion, we need a motion.
I move that we amend the contract as recommended by the chair.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to amend the superintendent's contract and we have a second. Is there any board discussion? Okay, having none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. Ms. Farmer, Greer Middle College Amendment.
Good morning, Chairman Payne, members of the board, Superintendent Neely. I'd also like to welcome Executive Director Jimmy Armstrong from Greer Middle College. He's here with us today. Greer Middle College Charter High School, or GMC, serves students in grades nine through twelve on the Benson campus of Greenville Technical College near Greer, South Carolina. The school and its board request approval to acquire land and construct a facility for a new feeder school serving students in grades three through eight as an initiating step in order to submit a letter of intent by November first, 2023, and a new charter school application on February first, 2024. As evidenced in the enrollment projection form included in the amendment attachments, the school proposes to serve grades three through seven in year one of operation and add eighth grade in year two. This amendment, if approved, will permit GMC to proceed with the necessary steps to complete the construction of a new facility in time for the school to open for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. GMC understands that the new charter application approval is at the discretion of the South Carolina Public Charter School District Board of Trustees. The school recently renewed its charter in 2022, demonstrating its commitment to the district and its dedication to putting kids first. GMC boasted a 2022 graduation rate of ninety-eight point two percent and a graduation rate of one hundred percent in 2020 and 2021. Over ninety-seven percent of GMC students were considered college or career-ready. Additionally, the school's students outperformed the state by almost twenty-six percent on the English one and of course Examination, or EOC, and exceeded the state by thirty-five percent on the Algebra One, EOC. GMC believes that providing students with project-based learning and integrated instructional program and a consistent disciplinary and cultural environment from elementary school through high school will ensure comprehensive student achievement and growth. GMC and its board wish to construct a sixty thousand square foot academic building on fifty-two acres, approximately ten minutes from this current high school facility. The school requests to proceed with due diligence, investor commitment, and securing financing for the new facility. Once complete, finance staff will vet the facility finance plan for acceptable arrangements. The new facility will include classroom space, a multipurpose area, a gymnasium, fields for track, soccer, and tennis courts. You have the district financial analysis included in the report and the school's financial documents in the amendment attachments. Staff recommends approval of the amendment, allowing GMC to proceed with due diligence on the property acquisition and facility construction, to eventually serve a three, grade three through eight feeder school contingent on submission of a new school application and approval by the PCSD Board of Trustees. Thank you. May I invite Jimmy Armstrong?
Thank you. I did not know that I was going to have an opportunity to speak. So, this is a great benefit to us. We believe that this is an opportunity for us to have a feeder school. We are drawing from what amounts to six or seven middle schools in our area. And for us to be able to have a feeder school that allows us to have the culture and climate of what we already have at our high school and to be able to make that transition from what amounts to grades three and then carry on that tradition of excellence, the climate, the culture, and then move that into our high school where we do things a different way and we do things well. And so, that's the reason why we believe that in finding the property, we were very lucky, the fifty-two acres, and being able to continue this so that we do have a great transition for our students going from grades three through eight into our high school setting.
All right. Before we can proceed, we need a motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chief? I just had one question.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to know, I'm so impressed with your stats, of course, they speak for themselves. How was the decision made that it would be a three through eight as opposed to something like a six through eight?
Right, well, it comes down to numbers for us. And so, in looking at this... And so, in looking at this, we have to be careful with our enrollment at our high school because we're on land with Greenville Technical College. And so, we've only got six acres that are leased through Greenville Tech on a fifty-year lease. And so, we have to be careful with our numbers so that we also don't go into some type of an expansion at our high school. Because if we have, if we go over a hundred and fifty per grade level, then that affects what's going on at our high school. Then we've got a school that's going to be at six hundred or more students at the high school because they transition from eighth grade, they go ninth grade, and then it starts trickling up and that increases our enrollment. And we really don't want to increase our enrollment at the high school per se. We would rather go down a grade level and then have less numbers per grade level, but also be able to pay for what we're going to do at this community school and be able to serve our needs also at the high school.
Let me just ask this one other thing.
All right.
Thank you for that answer. Is it, in some ways, I've noticed that schools appropriately are seeing the benefit of what I call siloing down. So, they're trying to get their opportunity to communicate and deal with students from their educational perspective earlier rather than later. Is that part of this as well, going to the third grade for?
Right. So, to look at it from that standpoint, there is, we don't really want to get to K through two because that's, if you go into a traditional setting, K through two could be set up as primary, and then you've got elementary and intermediate and then middle school. And so, that third grade would be our bottom level that we would want to serve. And at the same time, being able to get somebody in there that, you know, you surround yourself with good people. And my experience goes to about middle level and it goes up to high school. And then being able to bring somebody in that also has that experience of understanding how to teach, how to develop a third grader and on up. So, that thought process is in there, but that thought process is also being third grade and then going up through eighth grade.
Thank you. Then thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Butcher?
So, just sort of contingency question. So, let's pretend that there's a delay or a problem with getting the charter for that school or something like that. So, what happens to the land then? Would you sell the land?
We're gonna, we're gonna hold on to that. That area is prime real estate. And we're making an investment so that we can serve students. If this were to fall through for something you're talking about, then we can hold on to it. And, you know, I mean, we, there's an opportunity there to make money. And so, that could happen too. We don't want that to happen. We want to serve students. And that's why when the fifty-plus acres came open and it's, you know, it's sitting there on two ninety and you're familiar with where that is, there's a subdivision that's being built right across the road from the place. There's another subdivision that has just started and another subdivision that is about two or three minutes down the road. So, there's a need for that area. Greenville County Schools did a planning report. And so, they're saying that elementary students, it's going to rise and then it's going to kind of level off, but they're still in that rise mode in Greenville County Schools. And, I mean, there's seventy-seven thousand students there. So, they've got a pretty good idea of what's going on. But from the land standpoint, if this were to fall through, we're gonna hold on to it.
And so, Mr. Chair, usually, and for Superintendent, so usually when we get a charter application, it's in reverse, right? Like, they usually don't have space on a building before they come with a charter. So, it's okay to go in this order where they actually would come. I suppose it would only be more helpful, but, okay, all right. Just want to make sure the order of operations is still, you know, not unorthodox.
Yeah, what's helpful here is that you've got a school leader and a school board and a school that has the capacity to be visionary in this way and to be looking at what are the opportunities to get younger children into our school, you know, model. So, this is actually smart on their part.
I want to celebrate with you the results that you are having in your test scores. Says good things.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So, this is a very sizable project and I'm sure your board has gone through estimates, although you may not have an estimated contract. It's very sizable. Do you have a total dollar amount you might anticipate spending?
Right, we're on the, on the top side, on the top side. I don't look at it as a worst-case scenario, but on the top side, it's twenty-two million. We're going to try to squeeze that a lot and hopefully we can get that under twenty. And then, we're going to be, you know, that'll put us between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty students.
Will you be receiving, hopefully, outside contributions?
That is definitely our hope. We will have a building campaign that will start as soon as we get some type of an approval.
How much do you anticipate that capital campaign to be for?
That we're, in our past experience at the high school level, and this is, this is kind of different in charter because with charter at the high school level, you've got parents that are also thinking about their child going to college. And so, you know, that money that might be coming to you, you can't think of it like a college setting. I have, I have learned a lot since being with charter since 2014 and that when you do a capital campaign, we don't expect over five hundred thousand. And so, that's a, we got, I think, between three hundred and four hundred thousand when we developed the middle college at Greer. And so, that, that is a tough road. However, at the elementary and middle level, those parents are not thinking about that. And, you know, if you've ever done any kind of development piece, it's the triangle setup, you're going to have a few at the top that are going to be big contributors, and then it trickles down and the most, the most is going to come from your parents or people that are in the immediate community area. And so, we're, we've got that in mind, but we also are realistic about our goals too.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, I'll call the motion to accept staff recommendation to accept the Greer Middle College Amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's none opposed. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jimmy Armstrong is someone that I have known. And as an educator, why don't we do things? And it makes us proud that we have someone that for many years, and I knew him when he was a high school student at age fourteen. So, I have my two products and I ask them, "Did you know, John?" I won't say anything bad about him now. They get nervous, you know, John gets nervous and then Jimmy. So, he's worried. He's trying to run back to the back, but he's a good person and I congratulate. These are the results that you are getting and what a wonderful job and wonderful staff that you put together. Congratulations.
Thank you. Nick, the June financial report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Trustees. At the end of the fiscal year, we expect zero percent of the budget to be remaining. We are currently at four point six four percent. And that's based off of unaudited financial data. On the next page, we're looking at our district-wide income statement where we're comparing revenues versus expenditures. Year-to-date through June thirtieth, we've received a total of a hundred and fifty-nine, excuse me, a hundred and fifty-nine million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue. Total expenditures year-to-date, a hundred and fifty-eight million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, for a net increase of three hundred and sixty thousand. On the next page, we're looking at district office-only revenues versus expenditures. For the month of June, we received three hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue. Year-to-date, three million, seven hundred and six thousand. Expenditures for the month of June, three hundred and twenty-three thousand. Year-to-date, three million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand. For the month of June, we had a net income of sixteen thousand. Year-to-date, net income projected at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand for a projected fund balance end of year of just over two million dollars. On the next page, we're looking at expenditures broken down by department. For leadership, we had one million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Sponsor performance was four hundred and ninety-five thousand. Support and implementation was seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Financial services and operations was seven hundred and seventy-four thousand for a total of three million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand. As we go through the audit process, the budget versus actuals will be cleared up. So, when you see the negative numbers on the, in the right-hand column, those will be cleared up as we continue to go through our budget, or the audit process. The next two pages is the breakdown of state revenue received for the year. I want to point out two specific line items. Revenue thirty-one oh three, state aid to classrooms, and revenue thirty-five oh three, state aid to classrooms. This is the new funding formula that was implemented for, in fiscal year FY twenty-three. When you look at the total between those two line items and you compare it to the total on the last, on the last page, total state funding received was a hundred and eighty-seven million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Total state aid to classrooms in the new funding formula was a hundred and eighty million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, which is approximately ninety-six point four seven percent of revenue. So, within the new funding formula, the majority of state funding is flowing through that source. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation of the June financials.
Thank you. Need a motion?
I move that we accept the financial statement as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions? All right, I'll call the motion. All in favor of accepting the June twenty twenty-three financial report as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
That's none opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Payne, new school contract approvals.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chairman, trustees, today I bring before you the contracts from the seven schools that you approved in our two April board meetings. Over the summer, we collaborated with the schools to create these template contracts, working with our respective legal teams. The district recommends that you approve these seven contracts so that the chair and the Superintendent Neely can sign and finalize the contracts with our seven new schools.
If you have anything you want to add, you're good. All right, before we can proceed, we need a motion. Some move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions for John? All right, having none, I'll call the motion to accept staff approval for the new con, new school contracts. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's none opposed. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Good morning, Board. At this time, I'll ask John Payne to come up and give a sponsor performance update. John?
Mr. Chairman, trustees, I wanted to give you a brief update of the work that my department has been taking on over the summer. I'll start first with some authorization updates. Over the summer, we had a new school orientation and luncheon for our new schools, our seven new schools. You see some photographs here where we all got together and began talking about the work that lies ahead, including some of the professional development and support. Technical assistance will be providing this coming fall. In addition, we held a, we held, on July seventeenth, we held an interested applicant workshop. We had five potential applicant groups that came to our district office where we discussed our school district, we discussed our portfolio of schools, and kind of gauged their interest. It's our understanding that at least one of those will be, has committed to submit a letter of intent and an application this upcoming year. But that was a very good opportunity for us to meet with communities thinking about opening charter schools. In terms of what's on the horizon for our authorization work, we are, we have established our charter school academy trainings, the first of which will be August twenty-ninth of this month. We'll have another one in November and the final one in January. And these sessions are geared for us to talk about the necessary work that the schools will need to undertake to fulfill the pre-opening conditions and other things that they'll have to do so that they can have a successful launch of their school this time next year. In terms of data and accountability, a few updates from that, we, and one more slide, please, sir. So, over the summer, we have been providing power school training. We provided a week-long power school training here at the district office back in July with the first day or so for new power school clerks and the rest of the day for all power school clerks from our respective schools. That was really well received. We got a lot of good feedback about that. The next thing that we have been working diligently on with Josh Finley, who is now our Director of Data and Accountability, is working to deploy a schematic for us to better manage all of our IT. When you think about IT, oftentimes you think maybe of the device or some data, but there's really a lot more that goes into it. And our hope and our plan is to deploy this framework so that we can ensure that we are attending to all the data and technology needs. For example, ensuring that we have data governance procedures, we're, we have procedures to mitigate risk for our data, making sure that we have standardization, how we're setting up the architecture of our schools or our IT and all these other components. And our hope right now, we think we're kind of at the firefighter level. Our hope in the next year or two is to be able to elevate up to that level of business partner where we are really delivering strategic business projects using information technology, data, and that sort of thing. So, we're excited to get this underway and think this will really streamline our data work, okay? We have been doing a lot of work with our schools, conducting meetings to support our schools with various data questions, particularly as there have been some changes coming from the state level. We have successfully set up power school for four new schools and we did a school migration internally and externally to make sure our schools were all set to open the school year, open this fall semester. On the horizon for our data team is, we're beginning here soon, beginning through the fifth days of some of our schools, so we have our fifth-day reporting. We are planning monthly webinars and we're preparing for the new accountability system, which we will launch this fall, and are continuing to our investigation and analysis of all the various data that we can. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my update for sponsor performance.
Just a quick question. You may or may not be able to answer this. In my corner of the state, and generally these school districts are year-round, but some of the school districts are, they started their new school year before the end of July. Generally, when are our schools starting? Is it mid to late August or is it just all over the place?
Well, in terms of the statewide, it's kind of all over the place because a lot of school districts are going to what the department has styled a modified year-round calendar. Our portfolio of schools starts, some of them, a few of them started in early August. Some are beginning to start now and through the end of August for our portfolio of schools.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask about the, I'm just curious about the power school training. So, the people who came, were they mostly from the new schools that we just authorized? Or were they from existing powers, you know, schools and sending their existing people?
So, we had, the first day of the training was for any new school or any of our schools that had a new power school clerk. So, it could be our new schools as well as, you know, any school that has existed that maybe just brought on a new power school person.
So, wasn't the school's age so much as the employee who they hired to run the thing?
Correct, yes, sir, yeah. And then the remainder of the time was going through all of the, with the existing power school clerks regardless of if they, this is their first year, they've been there, you know, ten or twelve years, and providing updates. uh, and providing updates, reminders, instructions, of course, updates on the things that the department is changing, uh, just to really make sure that we're attending to the quality of our data, uh, since that's kind of how we base, you know, our understanding of our school's success on.
So, and I guess no news is good news, but are there any that you have particular concerns about right now? Schools that you're worried about their state of power school and how that's being managed, anything like that?
Um, you know, we have some that we obviously need to work with a little more on their data quality, uh, but in general, I think they're in pretty good shape. Um, and, uh, just again, kudos to our, our tech partner, Canty, uh, in terms of, of working hand-in-hand with us over the summer to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our schools.
Yeah. I just think, you know, Mister Chair, this is one of the things that is, if, at some point down the road, if we have concerns with the school, if there's stuff like this, like at this point, if you said, oh yeah, we have these kind of schools that are on the, you know, on the edge here, and then we see another problem come up later, this is the kind of, um, rec, uh, record-keeping is not the right word. I guess it's, um, um, paper trail, I guess is what I'm looking for of, if there are problems early on, that we're just, you know, aware of those, keeping track of them, so that if it becomes bigger later on, we can say, oh yeah, we were watching this three years ago, we kind of knew this was coming.
That sparks another question for me. Um, and I'm not a power school expert, but as I understand it, it's, it's, it's central to the, to the function of the school. It, it handles records, uh, all sorts of data from attendance, grades, whatnot. Um, all that flows into funding, because if, if, if the data's off, you may have too few students or, or at least reported enrolled, or too many. So it all flows through, um, a very central, uh, component of a school's survival. Is there a certain certification that's required? I know obviously there's training for, for power school, but are these people certified?
There's no real certification per se, uh, but we offer that training as part of the district, uh, as well. The state puts on something called P-SUG, which is Power School University Group. Thank you, Mister Finley. Uh, and they have a conference every summer in Myrtle Beach, and they go through all of the training. Uh, and so there's a number of professional development opportunities, but to date, there's really not a certification. Uh, we have, uh, as part of our accountability framework that we're setting up, are, will be intentional in terms of being more proactive and looking at the data, so we can look and see, hey, if you've got some errors, we're going to be proactive and let you know, so that you can get that fixed in real time, as opposed to kind of wait until the end and say, hey, it was all messed up from the get-go.
Yeah, and, and I think that's, that's, I guess, is kind of what I'm leading towards, right? I mean, you know who came, you know who showed up here, you know kind of what you're asking schools to do. And I think this, I, I'm just, you know, kind of walking through what you go through when a school gets closed, right? I would much rather be in a position where we, you know, we knew, that, we knew it was a problem leading up to here, right? We've kept track of who showed up, who sent who where, how many times they replaced their power school coordinator over the years and had a new person come, which itself should be an indicator that maybe there's something we should be keeping an eye on, things like that.
Do, is there any requirement for a, a bond? Think of, think of it this way. Um, in any organizations, especially a government-funded organization, if, if, basically, if you're able to touch money, you have to be bonded. So your treasurer, your cashiers, you, they, you need to have background checks, you need to be bonded. Uh, a, a person who sits in, in the power school coordinator's clerk, or whatever the title is, seat can impact funding one way or another. Is there any type of requirement that they have background checks or any bonding?
I think that's pretty standard in terms of, I'm not sure about the bonding, but, you know, certainly background checks that are conducted for individuals when they're hired, and that would be true for all faculty, and that's one of the things that our human resources helps with. Um, you know, we also do have a lot of, uh, scaled-up supports, uh, as well as scaled-up monitoring. So we have the ability at the district to really keep an eye on those kinds of things, so it's not a, a single point of failure. We have multiple layers, as it were, including up to the State Department of Education. And if we see something and we need technical assistance, we loop them in, uh, to assist us in reviewing the data and making whatever assumptions about it.
Okay. And sorry, Dr. Pope, I didn't want to say something. Assurity bond is what comes to mind. I think that's the kind of bond that I was thinking of. But I think, I think we've made, or at least I feel like I've made my point here, like, this appears, this seems like something that if we keep good track of it, that, that would help us later on down the road, should there be a problem, that it's not, oh, we've had this problem with the school, sorry, we didn't tell you for three years, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Pope?
Yes. I know some of our schools may struggle with boards who are not informed or are not effective. Um, is August twenty-ninth board governance, is that for school board members? Or is that for those in the school who need to understand the role of the school board members?
Um, the August twenty-ninth session?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. That will just be for our year zero school, so the, uh, seven schools that you approved back in, um, April, this is their time. So we're going to be, uh, touching on those various topics and reminding them, or sharing with them, these are the requirements under the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Uh, we're go, also going to, uh, have a session that, where we talk to, to them about the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, so letting them know all of this information upfront, so they can begin putting together policies and procedures in place to ensure, uh, that they're going to comply with FOIA, with FERPA, and all the other, uh, legal requirements.
Okay, so that, those are just for new schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything existing for school boards already in place that may help them to know what their role is?
Uh, Superintendent Neely's going to speak to that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Chairman, thank you. Mister Payne, just a quick question on the organizational technology information structure. There's a lot of conversation now about artificial intelligence and how, what type of impact this is going to have in education. Any consideration in this particular structure regarding artificial intelligence?
I mean, I think that certainly is, particularly around data rules, data governance, data management, and ensuring, you know, who has access to what, what systems are being used, um, and really keeping, you know, much more visibility on those components. Uh, so that is something that could be figured into this kind of structure. You know, what are, what would be the district's, uh, processes or procedures with respect to any AI? Uh, but that could also cover a host of things. So the, the, our, our real intent is to start putting together sort of the process, the policies, the procedures on ensuring security of the data, ensuring the quality of the data, and then creating those business rules to say, okay, this is what we do when, um, in, in order to, you know, make sure that we're maximizing all of our IT capacity, but minimizing any, uh, unnecessary use of, of dollars, minimizing any kind of risk or any of those other kinds of things.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Mister Chairman, my sincerest regret, I didn't catch my note that I made myself. I do want to introduce to you Bridget Kenio. Uh, Ms. Kenio joined us back in the summer. She is an eighteen-year veteran, a teacher in public education. She joined us from Lexington-Richland Five, and she is our, uh, charter development manager now, and working with Kristen Farmer, who is now our Chief of Authorization, and we were really excited. Bridget came in, and she's jumped right in, and so I wanted to introduce you to our newest team member.
Thank you and welcome. All right, Ms. Baker?
Uh, thank you, John.
Oh, excuse me, Nick. I'm sorry. I skipped.
Mister Chairman, I was, before I called Nick up, I was going to actually comment on a few things. Um, one, uh, Dr. Pope, I think one of the greatest challenges that we have in education right now is not occurring in the classroom. It's actually happening in the boardrooms of school boards, uh, both here in South Carolina and around this, around the, the country. Um, here in South Carolina, the Department of Education has the responsibility for charter school boards to provide training, or through a third party. Um, we feel strongly that since we're the ones that have a contract with these charter schools and these boards, you know, we should be providing training for them. So you're going to see a lot more advocacy on our part, uh, that we need a lot more board training, orientations, going through bylaws, policies, all the things that you do, strategic thinking, you know, having, having the opportunity to, to work together, um, on, on the future of the district. Well, our schools need to be doing the same thing. And, you know, if you have bad board governance, you're going to end up with bad, you know, management of the school. And bad management of the school means you're going to have trouble with finances, culture. That's going to create problems for enrollment, which creates more financial problems, and then you end up in a situation where a school either has to close or be closed. Uh, and, but it all starts with, with strong board governance, so look for more on that front. Um, and Mister Chairman and Board, um, you know, our schools, many, several schools actually started last month, uh, in July. So we've, we've got schools that are rolling, opening first days almost every day, running through November, uh, this, uh, September twelfth. Carolina Shores will open their doors on, on September twelfth, so, um, big, big breadth of openings there, but, uh, we're really excited. And the staff's been going to all the, uh, the openings, so we, we split duty and everybody goes and, and celebrates. At this time, I'll call on, uh, Nick Michael for the finance and operations update.
Thank you, Superintendent Neely. Our department is going through a restructuring process to align with the district's annual plan. I would like to take a moment to recognize our newest team member, Nikki Templer. Nikki joins us from Kershaw County School Districts, where she has several years of school and district experience. Um, she'll be working with state funding, Title I programs, Medicaid, and ledger detail. Welcome to the team. Our, excuse me, our immediate focus right now is to meet the, um, SCDE federal claiming deadline of August fifteenth. This deadline is unique to our district because we don't have immediate access to school-level expenditure data. So each school must submit a claiming packet to us for, for review. The re, the review, review process requires two levels, the support and implementation team for programmatic compliance, and finance for budgetary compliance. I'm happy to report that we will finish ahead of the deadline with all programs claimed and reconciled. Audit field work is scheduled for the week of October second. The current audit process began back in April compared to July last year. To date, we have all state funding reconciled and continue to work on the federal side. On the operations piece, the size of our facility requires a dedicated onsite team member to maintain safety and operational components. Last Friday, we posted a position for a building and grounds manager to accomplish this task. The posting will open, will, will be open until August twenty-third. And then lastly, the eighteen-twelve property next door is currently under lease review. We've found a potential tenant and are in the final stages of securing the, the lease beginning in September. More information will be available at the next board meeting. That concludes my update.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No, but it looks like there were some people applauding at one of the things he said, so I'm happy to applaud it. It sounds like the staff were happy about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago when State Deputy Superintendent John Payne had to receive an apology note from me because we missed the August fifteenth deadline two years ago. But a lot of great positive things have changed since then, and, and then, of course, now Deputy Payne now works with us. Um, at this time, I'll call on Emily Baker for a support and implementation update.
Good morning. Or at least I think it's still morning. Um, I have just three quick updates for you today. The first is to share with you two full-staff cross-team collaboration publications that went live this July. So that first one is your updated twenty-three, twenty-four acronym list. That's part of your board packet today, so enjoy that. We've made sure that it is, has the most recent updated acronyms that you may, um, find helpful in your work. The second is a guidebook. We published our twenty-twenty-three guidebook in July for our school leaders. We shared that first with our new school leader one oh one, which you'll hear about in a second, but we've also shared that via our weekly communications with them. This is essentially a brainchild of the full staff, as in, if you are new to education, if you're new to South Carolina, it could also be a great resource for you board members. It's a great starting place. If you're thinking to yourself, what does educator evaluation in South Carolina look like? You could go to that guidebook chapter, you can have links to direct resources, um, and it'll kind of give you information to, to give you the starting place for that program. So that's one of our other publications that went live this month. The next slide is a QR code. You can scan that later. We leave that document virtuals because there are so many embedded links within it. Um, so that's a great resource that you can use throughout the year if you need to. The next thing is, um, we've been saying a lot of Happy New Years to our schools, for our schools. This is their new year. So we're continuing to wrap up FY twenty-three and starting our twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, Superintendent Neely said some of our year-round schools went back in, um, July, and we're helping with those rollouts of first days. I attended two first days yesterday, which was great, and I know our staff has been doing that as well. It's hot out at Carline. So when you're passing a school that has that Carline going, think about those teachers, and it's hot out there. Um, but we hosted a handful of trainings in the office this July, um, to include a new sped coordinator training, new school leader one oh one, which is open to our brand-new schools, and brand-new leaders at current open schools. So we hosted that training with them, um, two sped coordinator trainings, so schools had options on dates there, as well as two Title III trainings. Per school request, we do not offer training to our schools in August, as they're busy kind of getting the doors open, but we will pick back up with our support to schools, um, as far as training goes in September. The last update is ESAR. So just to kind of remind you about where we are in the life of ESAR, ESAR one has completely wrapped. ESAR two is now closed, okay? That will kind of wrap up officially this fall. And then ESAR three, they have one more, our schools have one more year of spending. So we're doing a good bit of support. Tracy and her team, um, are doing a good bit of support on sustainability for our schools once these funds are truly spent and gone. So we're talking to them about what positions did you fund with ESAR, how are you transitioning off of ESAR? So that's a good bit of our support there this year, as well as we're preparing for a, um, programmatic self-assessment that the department rolled out to us in July. So the finance and the programs team are collaborating to get that submitted to the department by the September deadline. Those are all of my updates. If you have any questions?
Uh, Mister Chair, so I would love to know whatever you can provide us, especially as you get near the end of ESAR three and what schools have done. I'm particularly interested in, in that.
Yeah. Would you like quarterly updates for this school year?
An annual, I think, is fine.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Butcher, I think, um, in, in regards to ESAR, I think what we're going to see nationally again is that a lot of schools for the last three years have been depending on ESAR money to fund operations, and the money's going to end next September. And they've made hires, and they've funded programs and things like that. I'm very proud of our team for weaning us off of, of the ESAR money, because it's just not sustainable. Unfortunately, I think for many of our charter schools that have had to rely on that ESAR money, um, they're going to, they're going to see some financial tough times ahead. So we're trying to get ahead of that with them and try to coach them through, uh, how to, how to get off of the, the federal, uh, side of that. Um, at this time, I'll ask Emily Paul to come up for a strategic plan update.
Good morning. Um, in your board packets, you have our final annual plan. That is, um, the final plan that we reviewed in June, along with some of the revisions that we talked about at our June retreat meeting. So I am not going to go through that, but please let me know if you have any questions about that. Um, and I just wanted to kind of give you a refresher on kind of the cycle for what that annual plan is and how it triggers work for the year. So as you know, we, um, have our overarching five-year strategic plan. From that, we develop this annual plan that gives us work to work on every year, bits and pieces of the strategic plan. And from our annual plan, we break into department plans. So the finance team, the sponsor performance team, support and, support and implementation, as well as my team, we take what's in the annual plan and kind of divvy it out and figure out who's going to work on what and how those specific steps will work. So right now, we are in the process of finalizing those department plans. Once the department plans are finalized, that will trigger individual team member goals. And so based on what is in your department plan, you, you will work with your supervisor on two goals that you will be working on throughout the year to support that work. There, you can also write personal development goals if you'd like, but those two goals are required, which tie into our performance evaluation system. So the department plans and the goal work is happening right now, and I'm hoping, hoping by our September meeting that that's all finalized and everybody is moving forward on that work. Um, and then the last thing I have for you is I wanted to introduce Brad Henry. Brad is right here. Brad is our new Chief of External Affairs and Stakeholder Engagement. Um, he has been with us since beginning of July. He has most recently been, um, a government affairs consultant. He's also a former lobbyist and was the Finance Director of the McMaster for Governor campaign. So Brad has already been a huge addition to our team in making some connections and helping us work through and hopefully get some more charter schools in the corridor, so I'm really excited to have him.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Mister Chairman and Board, I've got a few. Mr. Chairman and Board, I've got a few items here I wanted to go through. First of all, let's have all the new teammates stand up and let's give them a round of applause. Come on, new teammates. You know, we don't have attrition around here. People don't leave because they love the culture. And so anytime we can bring new folks in and new blood to re-energize the rest of us, I think that's a very healthy thing. So we're very excited about our new teammates and, and the contributions that, that they've already made. Also want to thank the board for my contract. I feel very blessed to have the opportunity to serve you and the staff and the families that we represent around the state of South Carolina. It's, it is truly a blessing. And so I appreciate your, your support and confidence in me and I'll continue to strive not to disappoint and to continue to make this district the best district in the state of South Carolina. So thanks again for your support. Um, Josh, you got my... All right. So I wanted to, uh, you know, first day of schools are happening all over the state. My son Marsh's first day of school was, was yesterday. He came home with all smiley faces. Uh, so that's good. And, um, and he's going to a new school. So uh, it's interesting, you know, you choose the, if you truly believe in school choice, then you're going to send your child to the best school that's, that's best for them. And, um, we moved to Lexington this summer, and my son is now going to Midway Elementary and Lexington School District One. And I posted a picture of him and, and his class. We always do the first day of school pic, like many families do. And, um, I had, I had somebody comment, I don't know who the person is, but they, they, because they won't put their real face on their profile. But they commented and said, why not, why not charter? And, you know, while we do represent charter schools, I go back to school choice. Families should better make the best choice for their kid, depending on where their kid's learning is and the needs that they have. My child's learning needs are different now than they were when he was at a charter school last year, a private school before that, and a charter before that. Choice, that's what we're all about. And so, um, we're friends of our, our, our colleagues and our traditional school districts. And in fact, I sent the superintendent there before we enrolled, an email just to say, hey, I'm a new neighbor and I'm going to be a parent of a child in your district. That's what we do. We work together for all kids and let families make the decision about their child, where their child goes. Now, in Sumter, you know, Liberty Steam always seems to be cutting edge when it comes to just cool stuff, when it comes to supporting their families. I think that really stems from their, their culture. But this post came up last week, and right before school started, they provided haircuts for any of the children and their students before their first day of school. What a, what a great example of love and compassion for children. You know, everybody gets excited about the, the new outfits for school and the new lunchbox. I remember my NFL medal lunchbox. It was rusted out by the time I finished school. But I, I, a haircut, something simple like a haircut, so the kids can feel great, because who doesn't feel great after a haircut? Um, I just thought it spoke so much about that school and their focus and intentionality around, around kids. And so I just wanted to share that with you. And, and all of our schools are doing unique things on first day of school. Uh, but we need to see more of this in, in public education here in South Carolina and around the country. A few weeks ago, we had the honor of, of joining General Fig Newton, the Chairman of the Board of Polaris Charter School down in Jasper County. Uh, if you have not met General Newton, he's one of the most dynamic uh, general officers that I've ever met, but just most compassionate school, you know, leader, school board leader, um, one of the best. And he was honored by the governor with the Order of the Palmetto. And of course, the, the school community and the folks from Jasper and Ridgeland came up for that, and we had the, the honor of being able to be and be there to participate. But, um, you know, it's uncommon sometimes, you know, to have people like this want to volunteer. And in fact, just recently, he even drove a van up here from, from Jasper County to get some, some used equipment for his school. He just rolled up his sleeves and said, I'll come and get it. Isn't right, isn't that right, Michael? So it just speaks to his servant leadership, and I think it's just another example. He was one of the first Thunderbirds, one of the first African-American, he was the first African-American Thunderbird pilot in the United States, and just a great testament to his character. We've begun a new partnership discussion. You know, we, we're doing some work with Clemson. Uh, it's really innovative. We're talking with University of South Carolina about doing some things as it relates to teacher attrition, uh, and, and retention, and also the idea of co-teaching. So Liberty co-teaches. They have two teachers in every classroom. And so what would that look like in, in a charter school environment where we have two teachers in every classroom? People talk about the teacher shortage. We don't really see much of that problem in our district because of the unique cultures of our schools. Uh, but we want to continue to provide support for teachers and sometimes having a, a co-captain you can work with, to team up and more personalized learning for students. It's working at Liberty. I think it could work in a lot more schools. So we're, we're looking to do some research on how could we expand co-teaching in South Carolina. Uh, we'll also be doing some work with Arizona State University, who's really leading the way in terms of research on this topic of co-teaching. Um, the Kids First Radio continues to be a hit. We did change from Mondays to Tuesdays. Um, wanted to kind of broaden the horizon a little bit on that. Most recently, we had several of our new schools on, Carolus, PD Hall, Summit Academy, Sea Islands Heritage. And we've also just in the last two weeks had Green and Essie Whitmore and Carolina Shores. Uh, this is just a great way for us to really feature our school leaders and parents. And, um, and it's turned out to be quite a hit. It's also very informative and educational for the Midlands area, uh, where we don't have a whole lot of charter schools. And we'd love to see more for the families that live here in this community. The podcast focused this fall, you know, we kind of kicked it off with thought leaders, um, folks on a national scale. Now we're going to drill back down to parents. So the, the theme this, this fall is all about parents. Letting parents share the story of their kids' journey to a charter school, why they support choice in, in education, and then, um, let them just, you know, give their testimony. A couple of dates that are important for you, and I really would love, and some of you have participated in the past, but we want to go and give you these dates now. The Kids First Conference, this will be the third annual with the Charter Institute at Erskine, will be September 26th and 27th at the Columbia Convention Center downtown. Uh, there'll be well over 400 participants, school leaders, board members. Uh, I would love to see, you don't have to come for both days if you can. I understand your, your personal commitments, but I'd love to see each one of you at least for one day, half a day, on September 26th and 27th. And then we're going to have our annual Fall Leader Summit right here in this building on November 14th, and it'll be a kind of a Thanksgiving celebration again, like we did last year. Um, and I'd love to be able to recognize you all and, and have you participate with us. And then I know Jimmy Armstrong, I think he left, but, you know, I support what they're doing there at Grim Middle College. Um, I told him that this is a chance actually to further diversify their school and reach into more communities up in the upstate, uh, through having, you know, through a elementary and middle school. So, um, I'm really excited about the prospect of them bringing a solid plan to you. Um, and I appreciate your support of them today. And then, you know, this kind of goes back to what Dr. Pope was asking about. Uh, just this week, we've had an hour and a half session with the Bettis Board. Um, we've continued to see some, some, some problems there, and, uh, we spent an hour and a half with their, their full board going through board governance, FOIA, academics, finances, um, and trying to get them on the right track. They've got a new school leader now, but, uh, the board has been fractured. I'm saying it in public session because it needs to be said. Um, but we're intervening to help them. We're here about support, um, and to help them. And then, um, we've also had some collaborative conversations in person here at the office this week with Palmetto Scholars Leadership, uh, because we want to make sure that, you know, they're, they've got solid footing and can grow. That's, that's a unique school located on the Charleston Joint Air Force Base, and we want it to be successful so it can be a model for Fort Jackson and Beaufort, Shaw, and the other military bases. Um, at this point in the program, I'm gonna, um, and he, he does not like public display, um, but I'm going to ask Michael and his family to come up front. Y'all just, if y'all just go right up there in front of the stage, yeah? You chose to wear that pink coat today. We won't make this embarrassing, but, and I know it was a surprise. Michael did not know his family was, was going to be here. And, um, I'm so glad they could make it because they all have important responsibilities and, yeah, Angie, Angie is a school administrator in Lexington One, so.
That's right.
Yeah, but, but we are so, so happy to have all of you here together. Um, I did write up something I want to, I want to read, and then we have, um, a token of our appreciation that we want to share with, with you, Michael, and the family. Today is both an honor and a privilege to come together and celebrate, bidding farewell and extending heartfelt congratulations to a leader who has left an indelible mark on the South Carolina Public Charter School District. Michael Tom, our Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent of Financial Services and Operations, embarks on a new chapter as he retires after three and a half years of dedicated service to our district. A journey that spans 28 years of distinguished commitment to the state of South Carolina. When Michael assumed the role of CFO in the spring of 2020, our district was faced with challenges that demanded not only financial expertise, but also unwavering determination and visionary thinking. The district's financials, budgets, audits, and compliance were in disarray, shrouded by an IG investigation and Legislative Audit Council review. Yet it was precisely during these challenging times that Michael's leadership shone through brightly. Today, we stand in awe of the profound transformation he has orchestrated. The question lingers, why did Michael choose to join us amidst all these trials? This query unveils the core of his character. A character built on resilience, compassion, and an unyielding belief in the transformative power of education. Team with Nick, he embarked on the formidable journey of assembling a team of school finance professionals, a journey that laid the groundwork for a remarkable turnaround. Through Michael's leadership, unwavering in personal skills, and unwavering commitment to our district's core values, we bore witness to a metamorphosis that defied all odds. Today, three and a half years later, we proudly proclaim our district's stature as a leader in school finance, thanks to Michael's unwavering dedication and the efforts of his team. Our financial policies and practices have been overhauled, relationships nurtured, and a spirit of collaboration imprinted into our district's culture. Michael's guidance not only restored our financial standing, but also charted a course for us to become one of the fastest-growing and high-quality districts in the state. Michael's expertise extended far beyond the realm of finance. He proved himself as a skilled operations leader, culminating in the transformation of this beautiful church on Barmwell Street into a beacon of progress and community engagement. Amidst his professional triumphs, Michael's true legacy lives in his kindness, his infectious smile, his remarkable ability to forge connections with all who cross his path. He stands as a model of support, friendship, and respect, cherishing everyone's unique qualities, and embracing life's wonders. To Michael's wife Angie and your children, Tevin and Victoria, we extend our greatest gratitude for sharing him with us. Your unwavering love and support provided the bedrock for his dedication and effectiveness, enabling him to be a true catalyst for positive change in our district family. In closing, Michael, may your retirement be as vibrant and fulfilling as your time was with us. And if you ever find yourself bored watching your Pittsburgh Steelers golfing, socializing with friends, spinning LPS at home, or venturing to the serene landscapes of the beach and the mountains, know that we can always furnish you with squirrels, crows, hawks, snakes, mice, and caterpillars to capture and satisfy your inquisitive spirit. The bottom line up front, the bluff, you'll forever have a home here at 1824 Barmwell Street. And though your physical presence departs, your essence remains, and we are forever enriched by having known you. Thank you, Michael.
Bottom line up front. Look, I guess you got barbecue because it smells pretty good back there. So I'm, I don't have any words, you know, to say, but thank you to my friends, staff. You know, Nick called me, what was it, January? Before I came in February, he said, Michael, it's really bad. So I almost didn't leave Orangeburg, but you know what? I was, wasn't afraid of a challenge. And so, uh, well, yeah, we've made some changes and things were fixed and repaired, but thanks to the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your support. Chris, so many times I came to your office with some bad news, and, uh, you say, you know what, Michael? We're just going to own it. We're going to fix it. We're going to make it better. So I appreciate you for that. Thanks, Joe.
I'd like to ask the members of the board to join us up front for the presentation. I'm, I'm not going to read all this, but, um, because it is personal, and, uh, but I wanted to present Michael with this, uh, this plaque. Um, it's just a small token. I know we've got some other things we want to share with him. Um, but, you know, 28 years is a long time to be leaving. And to be in education is hard work. Um, this is a thankless job, and it's one of the most important jobs in America, is to be there to support children. And I can't thank you any greater, Paul, and for letting me, thank you, Michael. Do you members of the board, the Mike's team, Mr. Chairman?
Actually, I don't think this is leaving. Because I remember when he told us that he was going to leave, I galvanized down. Technically, I don't think this is, this is, this is, uh, happening. So, but I think probably will. I think it's been, we've had it, we've had it a while. I think they've been in that. Um, not all of our board members have been around prior to, to this arrival. And I'm not going to be as eloquent as our superintendent. We got a mess. We had a don't hurt fire. We had a mess. Um, senior members and, um, and he came in, assessed the situation. I'm sure several times he just gasped, oh my God, well, I got this. Um, but he, he took us by the hand and he, and he led us, led us out of it. And now we have all this to hold out in the front lawn. We've got a firm understanding. We're respected now, and we don't have to report with education, breathing under a neck to do this. So on behalf of the board, thank you for everything you've done for us and God's been here.
Mr. Chairman?
And as we, uh, as we gather back to our seats, I think Ms. Mosteller wanted to make a few comments.
Yeah, I did. He knows, he knows. First of all, I'm just so impressed with the pink. I can't tell you. I am. Um, a statement of confidence and strength. I, 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 I know that many board members were not here in the past when we transitioned to, um, to this wonderful gift from God to our district. But, um, Michael, you, the mess we were in, not, I, I knew it was terrible, but it even took you to show us how terrible it was by, by bringing reality to us, the stark realities of deficiencies and diversions and, and things that were just not good. Uh, you changed the, the profile of the operation of this district and the respect that this district now has because district now has, because the financial issues are really black and white. They are facts of the matter, and you took a very bad situation and brought it to a stellar level. And underneath, I think, all the talent that is in that room is the comfort of knowing that we are now financially on solid, transparent, and forthright foundation because of you. Because of you and, and Chris's presense in, in bringing you onto this team. I just can't say enough about it, and we all, all of us from our different perspectives, thank you for the bedrock foundation and, and protocols you have put in place to give us this kind of financial stability. So I thank you so mu, so very much. And in addition to that, you have the great personality that we've all gotten to enjoy these last three years. We will miss you very much, and I hope to see you on some kind of food truck or whatever it is you like to do in the neighborhood. I'll be a customer. Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
I was also here before Michael came, and he brought a ray of sunshine, and all of the bad news turned to solutions, and I'm so grateful. And he's allowed me to call him my son for three and a half years, and I'm grateful for that. Thank you so much, Michael.
Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my report. Any questions from the members of the Board?
Well, I did want to take it just one step further. Now, he's got some big shoes to fill, but I've got confidence in, in Nick. He brought, I believe you brought Nick in. Was he, are y'all about the same time?
Same time.
Okay. Okay, but, but I've got confidence in Nick going forward, that we will, we will keep the, the positive attributes that we now enjoy going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other, would the Board like to make any comments before we adjourn? Or do you want to go eat? All right, having none, we will adjourn and we will go enjoy nice much. Thank you all for attending.